Introduce it as council, it's cool. You don't have to change it. No, you don't have to do a motion.
Would you do that?
Just announce that we're gonna change it, too.
We're like, uh, Jack.
Good evening and welcome to the April tenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to, uh, let's, let's call roll. I am. Pardon me. John, there you go.
Very good. Shuldrough?
Here.
Hanky?
Here.
Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
There we go. Now we'll go back on to the approval of minutes. Are there any correction?
Did I miss that? I'm sorry, Tommy. Where did you go?
I think we're gonna start over.
Okay. Sorry, Tommy.
Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of March thirteenth? Hearing none, Councilman Jones moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda, for three minutes. Please remember that this is not a question and answer period, but we would be happy to speak with you after the meeting. Our first one will be John Engelmeier.
I was hoping I would be the first. John Engelmeier, twelve eighty-one, Graham Road, I know the routine. Tonight, with the changes of the city council bringing a new council member into the city council establishment, I respectfully request the city council appoint a charter review commission, also take the task of evaluating the ten-year master plan, which is out of date. Graham Road is a terrible representation of Florissant, and yet Patterson Road, Mr. Caputa, is a better road with curbs. Patterson Road, I said Patterson. Graham Road, one of the main thoroughfares into our city, looks like crap. As usual, I have asked to be placed on the bidder's list, and to my knowledge, I have not received any bids or any information on that. Another concern, on the, after the agenda, items are heard, the city council has a moment for council announcements. I believe, as the president of the city council, Ms. Pagano, you should take a moment and update the new building, the new court building, the Justice Center, the Weber Building, in terms of a progress report. That would be very nice for the citizens who are spending a lot of money on the bonds. The master plan, I'm reading from the charter, Chapter C, Section eleven point two. No public improvement or project of a type embraced within the master plan shall be authorized by the council until a written report of the commission thereon has been received. Failure of the commission to file a report with the city council within thirty days after submission of the proposal is, shall be permitted to council to take such actions as are deemed appropriate on the proposal. The report of the commission shall not be binding to the council. I was just curious if there's been a report from this planning commission, and it was called the Planning Master Plan Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin O'Donnell. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kevin O'Donnell, five twelve Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, six three oh three one, Ward four. I was gonna bring this up at the bills for the first reading, but I don't know if it's gonna be a three-reading bill or not, so I thought I'd bring it up now. I noticed that Bill ninety-two seventy-five is listed as, as, there's two debt services, one authorizing fifty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars from capital improvement and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and ten dollars from the Parks Improvement Fund. And they're all going, they're both going to separate part, separate debt services. And I imagine this is, I couldn't click on the, on the left column to see what, what the details of it were, because there is none. But there's also no E in front of the ninety-two seventy-five, so I figure it's not an emergency. But what I do wanna know, why are they bunched together? Why shouldn't, shouldn't there have been two separate bills if it's coming out of two separate accounts? And says it's coming from the special obligation bonds. Is there a separation of the nine million dollars into two separate bonds, one for the courthouse or the Justice Center, and one for the Civic Center? I, I don't, I don't mind seeing Parks Improvement Fund going to the Civic Center, but to pay off bonds that, I mean, actually, this, this bill means nothing to me, but when I read it, Mr. Lee tried to explain it to me, and I understood what they did. But it's not, it's not here in black and white for the residents of Florissant to read. And I'd like to, I'd like that to be brought to the attention in the future, at least, on this nine million dollars, because it's gonna be going on for at least fifteen years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. And we will move on to public hearings. We have public hearing number seventeen oh four oh one one.
In accordance with Section four oh five three ten of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the city council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at nine fifty-five, through St. Francois, on Monday, April tenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty PM, on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to First Collinsville Bank to allow for a monument sign for the property located at one four zero four zero New Hall's Ferry Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to hear. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling eight three nine seven six three zero or two D nine, TDD, eight three nine five one four two.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Good evening. Are you gonna wanna use the overhead?
Um, if you want me to, you have a copy of everything that I.
Right, but this would be for the audience, so that, the top left.
I'm not sure I know how to use this.
Go ahead.
She's got it.
There we go.
There you go.
Just give it a minute to.
I.
Turn on. You're gonna face it more towards you.
There you go.
Yeah, that works.
There you go.
Exactly. Okay. So this is the site.
But now I'm gonna need you to talk into the mic or take the mic out.
Sue Demond, P.O., Box four one four, O'Fallon, Illinois, six two two six nine. And so what you see here is the site plan, and right here is where we propose to place this low-profile monument. Uh, we're trying to go with a conservative, um, shorter sign that kinda goes along with FCB's plans when they build a new location. Go smaller rather than tall, and that's what you're gonna see here. This one right here is kinda, is it upside down?
Yeah.
There we go.
Towards you. And now you need to be closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
So that is kinda showing you what it would look like in place. It is appearing a little larger than it will actually be, because there was a sign right there, and we were trying to cover that up. It's a, I don't know, a real estate sign of some sort that was right behind where we imposed the sign. So we're not very far away from it, is what I'm saying. So if you look at this sign and you look at the taller signs back behind there, it's not really in proportion, it's smaller than that. This is what the sign looks like. If I could ever get anything straight. And so the top portion is routed-out lettering, so the background that you see will not light at night, it will, only the letters will light, and they are backlit with LEDs, so you have a nice even lighting and low maintenance, so you don't see the letters out very often. And then, of course, the LED message board, and FCB is aware of all the rules and regs that you have for LED message boards, as far as brightness and how many times you can change the messages and so forth. And last but not least, that is just the footing, and shows a, um, two-foot round-by-six-foot-deep augured footing. Uh, all components of the sign are internally welded to that steel pole. If you were to look at the sign from this end view, you're gonna see sign, you're not gonna see a pole, and you're not gonna see wiring, everything is totally enclosed. The sign is made of mig-welded aluminum, so there is no rusting or deterioration that you might see on some signs after a few years. Any questions?
Mr. Siam.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. My concern, and I could tell from the first glance at this picture, that many of the other council members shared the concern, is that the location of the sign seems to be very close to, if not actually in, the right-of-way, which I believe the definition of that is, it should be forty feet or more away from the center of the westbound lanes of New Hall's Ferry, and so I guess my question was whether the sign could be moved back a little bit to make sure that that requirement is complied with.
Um, it is out of the, off the property line for sure, and we can definitely move it as far back into that island as possible to keep it even further away. Uh, the biggest problem is, of course, as you know, that's a very small lot, as, you know, with a drive-through and everything that you have for a bank, and so that seemed to be the best place for it, especially a low-profile sign, something that looks aesthetically beautiful when they get finished with the building.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, um, what is the setback of the sign presently, the way you have it set? The way you have it?
Seven foot to the edge of the sign.
No, what is the setback from the center of the roadway like it's supposed to be? Where, where are you at with it right now?
Um, is that forty-foot setback, is that the setback to your?
Our setback is forty feet from the center of the road. I wanna know what, the way you have the sign right now, what is, what is your setback at? What's that sign at? If you're not in compliance, I wanna know how far out you're of compliance.
I apologize. So I was given this site plan showing this is where the property line is from the engineers, and so I would assume that that property line is correct in regard to the center of your roadway.
Well, it probably is correct, but that's not the setback, that's not our setback, that's not the setback.
Right. Are you talking about to your building line?
I'm talking about from the center of the road to the sign.
To the property line.
What is that number? Because our number should be forty feet, from the center of the road to the sign should be forty feet. That's our setback.
Honestly?
So what I'm asking is what is your, what is it? Where, where's it at? How's it, how far out of that forty feet are you? That's what I wanna know.
We should be seven feet past that forty foot. It should be forty-seven feet, if the engineer drawing is correct. But I can certainly check that out, I'd be hap, I'd be happy to.
I would certainly wanna know that.
Can I bring that to the second reading?
Yeah.
Second of all, why can't you move the sign to the, well, you took down the overhead? You got it upside down.
Am I backwards again? Okay, there you go.
On your right side of that, you have the long green island. Why couldn't you move the sign over there where you could put it farther back?
Right here?
Nope. In the front, on the greens, in the greens, there you go, right there.
Right here?
Yes. Why couldn't you move the sign? You can move the sign further back in that space, because you have more green area, as opposed to having to stay in that island, without increasing the size of the island.
Well, let's see, we have the utilities, not right here, so you're talking like right around in here?
Well, I'm talking, in order to get to the forty feet, you'd go back farther than that. I'm asking why you can't, I'm, I'm asking a question, why you can't do that? Why it can't be placed there?
Yes.
Oh, sure, certainly. Come on up. I'm just, I'm just asking questions, and I'm not getting any answers yet, so anybody that can answer them.
Hi, my name is Kevin Stein from First Collinsville Bank. I think if you're asking, can we move it, are you asking if we can move it, like?
Right. I wanna know why you can't move it into the others, instead of taking it out of the center island, put it in there where you can move it back further to get to the forty feet.
I think the issue is because of the utility easement, we don't think we can put the sign over that. But we'd, I'd have to check, I could check with the engineers on that also, but I think that was the issue, 'cause. We thought about putting it right here also, and, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna put it back here to comply with.
Well, that wouldn't be forty feet. Forty feet would be a little, a little closer than that. That's why I was asking how far you are now, then, then you'd know how far back you gotta go. We, we don't even know where the sign's at right now, so I, I can't, I don't know.
I think we were, we thought the forty-foot setback was forty foot from our property line, and that's what this line represents.
Forty foot is from the center of the road.
It is. So we'll, we'll get that number for you for the second reading then. Okay?
Because as far as I can understand, we're here because the, the building line is right here, and normally, they would want it in this area here, but then the sign, we would have to make it like twenty-five foot tall.
Right. Yeah. I, I don't know why P and Z didn't specifically, why they weren't clear with what forty feet is, and, yeah. That's all I have.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, and I guess I have the same question that Mr. Schmidt had, is that, um, on that, on that other strip of, of ground, it seems like that would be a, an opportunity to put the sign, and I don't, you know, without seeing a plan for that ten-foot easement, I, and somebody's gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong, I think you can actually build on a utility easement, you just have to be concerned if the utility company would ever need to come in and do something, but I'm, if this is halfway to scale, I think you could still get your sign back a couple of, yeah, go, no, go, go back, now come forward a little bit, you, you know, in there.
In here?
Some, I'm just getting a little bit further off the road. I'm concerned about how close it is to the road. I don't know where the forty-foot setback is either, so maybe that's something, if you come back to us with it, with that, but, and looking at your utility easement line, if it's ten foot, it'd be five foot either side of that line, and you might be able to have plenty of room to put it in, in that other location. So.
The other thing I don't know, I don't recall, it's been a while since I've been over there, I don't know what exists over here, if there's something that'd be blocking our sign or not, that's the other thing I wanna look at, and I can bring that report to you.
Okay.
Second reading.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, my concern is, um, just like, right, let me get there, right there. Get that, get that right in there.
Settle that hand.
'Cause on this sheet, you have the sign right on easement, I mean, right directly on easement. That's not a sidewalk.
You don't have your island built in there, right?
Right, I don't, yeah.
That, that right there's not a sidewalk.
Correct?
That's just asphalt, and then there's a little island.
Here, let's put it up here.
You can take that microphone off of there, too.
Are you referring to?
Yes, right there. I mean, that, right in there, that's no sidewalk. This ain't a sidewalk. That's the shoulder of New Hall's Ferry, so that's basically sitting in that little patch of.
Grass.
Grass, mulch, rock, whatever they have there. I mean, and that's, that's, that's the easement right there, and I mean, you're nowhere near the forty foot, plus, you're probably about maybe ten, ten, fifteen feet at the most from the road there with that sign.
And I apologize, they, that might not be, we were just basically trying to show what it looked like there, because they haven't done anything to the property yet. We weren't exactly positive of where that island was going to sit, so for the purpose of this drawing is kinda just.
That was more to show you, give you an idea of what the sign would look like, rather than placing it.
Where it was.
Where it was gonna actually be placed. And I think when we come back the second time, if we can use this drawing, we'll go back to the engineer and ask him to show where the center of the road is, and put new lines on here showing everything, that may be more helpful for everybody.
That would be great.
'Cause as of right now, you have it from seven feet from the existing sidewalk. Right?
From the property line.
That's the property line.
This is the property line.
And you have the existing walk right there, correct?
Yes, that's up here, it is.
That's New Hall's Ferry down here more.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, you're still very close to New Hall's Ferry with that sign. Very close.
I mean, this, the only thing I know that they set forth is this is our property line, and we're going seven feet back from the property line. But we can show you.
Which is right away.
We can give you a new, a new drawing like this that shows New Hall's Ferry, and shows how far you went back from that, and that may answer a lot of your questions. And if, and if we need to move it back some more, I, we'll have to see how that works with this. If we can't, if you can't approve it the way it is, then we'll have to decide what we need to do. We, we understand your concerns. You don't want it on the right-of-way, we understand that for sure.
Yeah, it is awful close to New Hall's Ferry, by what these plans that we have right here. That's all I have, thank you.
One, one of the other things I was just trying to show with this drawing is, because it was a concern in the committee, is when the cars pull out, do they have enough viewing area to see the, see cars coming? And so that's what we were kinda trying to show there, that there is a lot of room there for you to know what's coming.
Thank you. Um, before I call Mr. Hanky with a question, you're gonna really need to speak into that mic.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Mr. Hanky?
Yes, I have the same concerns with the rest of the council. If you look at your picture right there that you have up, it is right on the line. If you look in the background, uh, the signs that are in the background, you have the Lowe's and whatever that G E T signs, there's a reason they're that far back, and that's obviously a different setback than what you're looking at for your sign. I know you're looking across the street, too, and it's not very clear, but I, on that section of New Hall's Ferry, I have never seen a sign, a, a sign outside of somebody, something for sale or garage sale, that has been that close to, to the road. So there's a reason those other ones are back there. Just in your own drawing, you might wanna seriously consider aesthetically moving that sign back.
Part of that is that their signs are so tall, and we're try, we were trying to do a low-profile sign.
Mr. Jones.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, I, if you're gonna look at this, this drawing again, is there going to be a sidewalk in front of the bank? 'Cause you've got it noted where an existing sidewalk is, but I mean, this is gonna be a broken-up parking lot and with the three different planning islands, I'm just curious if there is going to be a, an area for somebody to walk.
Not that I, not that I'm aware of. If it's not on this, if it's not on this plan, I don't think we're planning to put one in.
All right. That's all I have, thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this?
Good evening, Kevin O'Donnell, five twelve Rancho Lane. Uh, first of all, this brings me back to conversations I've had with the council for the last couple of years at least, about consistencies, consistencies in ordinances and in following the ordinances in Florissant. I'm looking at Verizon Wireless and Mattress Firm batter, Mattress Firm's monument sign, that is not for, that's probably like forty inches from sidewalk. It is not forty feet from the sidewalk. You know, there's other, other places in Florissant that have their, have their, that have signs, signage, less than forty feet. And, uh, Realo Plaza was denied their signs because it wasn't forty feet back. And I think that if there's a special use permit, I don't see any reason, any problem for it, as long as it's not interfering with traffic. I mean, 'cause I pass this Verizon sign daily, and I live in, live in the area. It's only, it's only less than two-tenths of a mile from this, where this projected sign at the bank is. It's fourteen one one one, New Hall's Ferry Road. And if anybody wants to look at it, it is right there against the, real close to the traffic signal sign. So I, I don't know what, what the deal is here. And besides, I think that it shouldn't have gotten this far if it's, if it didn't, if they didn't pass the signage, uh, ordinances or the laws, because we had the same situation with the car wash, if you remember. The sign, the signage wasn't so-called included, we didn't think about it, you know, and, and they put the sign closer than forty feet from the road. So I mean, uh, there's something wrong with this, with the whole situation here. I don't know what the solution is, I'm just bringing, bringing to the attention that Florissant is a city of inconsistent rulings. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, Councilman Siam moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Councilman Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is Bill number ninety-two seventy. Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Wilkes Family Four LLC DBA Sticks and Ice to allow for the operation of a restaurant for the property located at thirty-one and thirty-five Florissant Oaks Shopping Center.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Wilkes Family Four LLC DBA Sticks and Ice to allow for the operation of a restaurant for the property located at thirty-one and thirty-five Florissant Oaks Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough? Hanky? Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt? Siam? Lee? Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-two seventy passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three eleven.
Yes.
Good luck. Bill number ninety-two seventy-one, I will be excusing myself for this vote due to a conflict of interest, so Vice President Caputa will take over.
Councilman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Is there any discussion?
My understanding is, are the, is the petitioners present? That we're gonna have, supposed to have the drawings, the, the color schemes tonight for the paint?
They actually didn't, didn't show up to my office.
Oh, they're not, they're supposed to be courried. Excuse me, my name's John Pennington. Uh, yeah, they were supposed to be courried Friday. I, I sent them via email to Mr. Lum on, on Friday.
And do you have, do you have a picture of it?
So I think there was a couple of questions regarding the pink color.
Yes.
The current color of the building is white, and there is a, a checkered banner, the entire length of the building on the northwest and east side, that's like a black, white, and red checkered banner, that will all be painted over white, so, um, they will just get a fresh coat of paint, and then the signs, as you see, are reflective of this drawing as well, so, pretty basic.
So the checkered paint that is. So the checkered paint that exists now is going to be covered over?
Exactly.
And that I'm assuming is a gray, and then the yellow for the Hertz sign?
Yes, that's a black mansard roof. And then, um, I think each sign is... 60 surface feet or 60 square feet.
Okay.
And then the monument sign is existing, and we'll keep that in place.
Okay. When you said you sent these drawings in, since we were some concerned this evening that we didn't have them, and that was one of the requirements, that we'd have them before we would move forward on this, so I guess this will suffice. If any other council members have a, has a...
Yeah, there must have been a mistake, as I, I emailed Mr. Lum Friday, did not hear back until, I think, today. Um, so it was supposed to come directly from the architect and the engineer. And they're not here either.
Mr. Lee?
You said you heard back today from who?
I emailed this exact drawing, which is what was supposed to be couriered to, I think, Mr. Lum or you, Karen. Um, when I emailed them, I did not hear back. And then I heard back today, and then my architect said that he couriered them, and I guess they have not arrived. So I, I don't know.
I didn't get them in my office, so I don't know.
Okay. So you didn't hear back from anybody from the city? You heard something from the arch?
No, I, in fact, I thought it was odd that I didn't hear anything last week, which is why I emailed this in advance to Mr. Lum, but did not hear back until today from him that he even received the email. So certainly don't...
So I'm going to follow up and say, is there an urgency with getting this approved tonight? Because I think I would like to see the, take a, take a look at them and if we could...
That is it.
Yeah. I, I understand.
Okay.
Kind of like the...
No, I mean, there's no, you know, major urgency other than what was sent is, you know, this. So, you know, I, if you look, I mean, we'll go on your pace here, it's just, uh, you know, it's pretty, pretty basic. So, but we understand we have to follow the rules, so.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Yeah, I was disappointed we didn't get the renderings. However, it sounds like you did everything that you were responsible for, so I will not be holding up this vote.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, if it's okay, can I come get a copy of that?
Oh, sure.
That'd be great.
And if you don't mind, I'll check my email and just reference correspondence real quick.
Mr. Lee, are you? Do you have any more questions?
So you're saying that all the existing brick that's there now, including the checkered, would be painted a white? Okay, because that, some of that didn't look white on there, but, uh...
It's just foot, it's just footnoted in there. So the current building is white.
Right.
And there, again, there's a, a banner along the entire plane of the building that kind of mimics a, like a race car flag.
Right.
Um, but it's not a flag, it's a banner because it covers, again, the, the entire linear footage of the building. So that would just be painted over a white. So the entire building will be white.
So then you're not changing the color?
No, sir.
As you stated before in the public hearing?
Just, unless you would like the, the banner, but I, I don't think Hertz would like that.
Because you stated at the public hearing you were going to change the color.
Well, to now white. So, all, all of this is, you know, really driven by Hertz and their corporate approval process, and they want white, the building's white. So in essence, we are not changing the color other than changing the banner look, which...
Because this doesn't look white. This looks gray.
That's, that's...
Or if that's the, oh, I guess that's the glass.
Yeah, that's the frontage.
Again, this is not really a good color rendering of the building, but, uh, and still, the problem is, we'd have to amend the adj, you'd have to amend the bill in order to include this, I would think, although now since they're not changing the color, that changes everything now. I...
That is correct. In fact, Pennington has indicated that you are not changing the color of the brick.
And I'm just going to confine the issue to the brick. Then you don't need to amend it. Quite frankly, we have a provision in section two subsection seven where it reads, "Any painting of brick or alternate color of the building must be approved by the council." We don't need that either. That, we're better served by striking that provision and leaving it the way it is.
Yeah, because you could claim that it's really a maintenance thing because you're getting rid of the...
Correct.
The, the painted flag stripe, the red and white, or the black and white stripe that's flag-type.
And I can't tell if that's brick. John, is that brick?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's actually a block. It makes me block.
I go by it today. It's painted on the brick.
Yeah. So I, at one point, this building matched kind of the colors of the building next door that was torn down, uh, which is now the, uh...
Right.
Storage facility or soon to be. So...
Well, Mr. Russell, then we, do we have to still amend the bill to the fact that they are just staying with the white or we don't have to do anything to the bill? You don't have to do anything to the bill to the extent that they are merely maintaining the existing white. Then I've heard that there is a portion of the brick that is checkered... Right. That is going to go from checkered to white. So if we want to, if the council wants to allow that, you could change the language in subsection seven to read, "The painting of brick to white as an alternative color of a portion of the building is hereby approved by the council." Sort of simple and straightforward and gets us where you want to go if that's what you want to do.
Is that it, Mr. Schmidt?
That, yeah, that's fine with me. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Now that we're staying, yeah, that we're not changing colors, yeah, that changes everything. So...
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Hanky?
Yes, I think Mr. Pennington, uh, has acted more than good faith here. There's nothing, nothing under the table or anything here. He sent them in, in fact, he double-checked on it, that they were sent and that we would all have them. This suffices for me. If there's some, uh, procedural error on the city's part perhaps, that's not your fault. I repeat, I repeat what I said. I think you acted in good faith, and I think we should respect that.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I'm just checking an email, and my, um, architect said that Mr. Lum received these late this afternoon. So, um, that was at 3:23 today, so, um...
So if the city council wants to allow the painting of the brick to white, again, part of it is already white, but the checkered portion, then you would need to amend, as I said before, let me make sure, section... One subsection seven to read, and I'm doing this for you, Karen, as well. "The painting of brick to white as an alternative color of a portion of the building is hereby approved by the council."
I'll make said motion.
Motion by Mr., wait a minute, we have, we have Mr. Jones that would like to speak for the motion. There's a motion on the table, but we're putting it, Mr. Jones?
Thanks for the motion.
Oop. Okay. Nice catch.
I just want to apologize for the city. It's embarrassing the nine of us to sit up here when you did everything you were supposed to do, and we didn't do our end of it, sir. So I apologize for that.
No, uh, apology accepted, but, you know, these are, when you have multiple team members, you know, administrating information, you know, I, I kind of trust my engineers, do their job, their architects do their job, and, uh, mistakes happen. So hopefully Mr. Lum has those. If for some reason, Karen, you do not have those, let me know, and I'll, I'll drop off a hard set tomorrow.
There's a motion on the floor, but Mr. Hanky, seconded by Mr. Egan, to amend the bill. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. City clerk? Please read the bill for the second time.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to the Hertz Corporation DBA Hertz Car Sales to allow for the auto leasing and sales establishment for property located at 1390 and 1400 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill?
Hold, hold on one second. Hold on one, one second. We've got to get back to that. So you're here. Do you need a councilman? Moves for a third. We've got to get on the floor first.
Councilman Hanky moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Hertz Corporation DBA Hertz Car Sales to allow for the auto leasing and sales establishment for the property located at 1390 and 1400 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone on the bill? I see one. Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Ben Hammond, 1620 Florissant Park. Uh, my only thing was, it seems like, and maybe I don't know how it works, but I would think planning and zoning should have brought up this stuff, like painting the bricks, that are you going to paint the brick? And, um, with the sign, is the setback 40 feet? Or with Burger King, oh, you have a drive-through, let's do a special use permit. So I don't know, that's just sitting out here for the last couple of weeks or months or whatever it's been. It just seems like there's some steps being missed before it gets to you guys. So that's it.
Thank you. No further comments? Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Begano? Schmidt?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Madam President.
Bill number 9272. Councilman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders amending Title III of the Florissant City Code Schedule 13 prohibited, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets by adding there to a portion of Leisure Wood Court.
Councilman Syam moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders amending Title III of the Florissant City Code Schedule 13, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets by adding there to a portion of Leisure Wood Court.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Bill number 9272 passes and becomes ordinance number 8313. Next item is new business. The first item under new business is board appointments. Seconded by Councilman Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made.
Thank you.
Councilman Kaputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I would like to reappoint Robert Smith to the Citizens Participation Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Also, I would like to appoint Matt Gramlich at 445 Lyme Dale for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Seconded by Mr. Childers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made.
Thank you.
Next, we will have a resolution. Resolution number 994.
Resolution of the mayor and the Florissant City Council expressing opposition to any legislation which weakens the law that requires cities, schools, and other governmental entities to pay prevailing wages for construction projects.
Councilman Childers moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? Mr. Hanky?
Not so much discussion. The bill is listed as presented by myself. I would want it to be presented by the entire city council and the mayor.
Do we need a motion for that? No, it's just going to be us, council as a whole? Mr. Egan?
I'm okay.
Was that just for that?
That was my, my...
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Resolution of the mayor and the Florissant City Council expressing opposition to any legislation which weakens the law that requires cities, schools, and other governmental entities to pay prevailing wages for construction projects.
Councilman Hanky moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Childers. Clerk, please poll the council for the final. Oh, please.
Shuldrough? Hanky?
Yes.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and the Florissant City Council expressing opposition to any legislation which weakens the law that requires cities, schools, and other governmental entities to pay prevail, prevailing wages for construction projects.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment?
John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. Wish chairs were up front, it wouldn't take so long to get up here. On this resolution of 994, I appreciate the resolution being passed by the city council, the resolution offered by the mayor, and I hope that's just the title, not, not the individual, and the city council as a whole expressing the opposition. I applaud that, respect that, and glad it's on the resolution. Wish more resolutions were offered by the city council in us, in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Begano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and the Florissant City Council expressing opposition to any legislation which weakens the law that requires cities, schools, and other governmental entities to pay prevailing wages for construction projects.
Bill number 9275.
Orders authorizing appropriation of $353,770 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350320000, debt service, and an appropriation of $3,000, 338,310 from the Park Improvement Fund to account number 09509020000, debt service, to provide for funding for the principal and interest payments for the special obligation bonds.
The next item will be council announcements. Mr. Hanky?[1761.18]
Yes, first and foremost, I want to thank everyone for the recent election for, I know I was unopposed, but to re-electing me for Florissant City Council for another term. You have my word that I will do my best for what's best for the city, but in particular for Ward 6. Any questions or anything you need, you call me at 831-1180. And last, also, Valley of Flowers is coming up and you've heard me say this before. Spring has sprung and things, let's spruce up. We're going to have a lot of visitors in our city for the Valley of Flowers. Thousands of people influx. Let's put on our best face for, for the visitors to our city. Thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the concern that Mr. O'Donnell had. I had sent you some information. On Bill number 9275, which we read tonight, Mr. O'Donnell, we sold special obligation bonds to cover two separate projects. One was the HVAC and energy at the James J. Egan Center. The other project was the court's renovation. Those were two separate amounts. They were done separately. We didn't sell two separate sets of bonds. We sold one set of bond. So the bill you see tonight, we're allocating the amount to make the payments on the bond based upon the amount of money that was secured to do those two different projects. The Park Improvement Fund, that money is being used to pay for the renovation of the community center, which is part of the park system. And the Capital Improvement Fund is a capital improvement to a building which we purchased and are earning, are going to turn it into a, to a courthouse. So there are two separate projects, two separate funds, two separate allocations. There is, there's no co-mingling of funds, but there was one set of bonds sold to cover both of them. So you're, I thought you just wouldn't understand that. So that's the deal.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, ma'am. The Maryland Heights Police Officers Association will have our annual golf tournament this year. Once again, will be hosted by the Golf Club of Florissant June 2nd. Our tournament benefits the kids at Rankin Jordan Children's Hospital, which is a very near and dear charity to our heart at Maryland Heights Police Officers. I'd ask you, if you want to sponsor a hole, get ahold of me. If you want to get a force them in, you can contact me, jayegans70@aal.com or Maryland Heights Police Officers Association on Facebook. And secondly, I want to thank all the voters who turned out on last Tuesday's election to become part of the process and especially those who voted yes on Prop P. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shuldrough?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank the Valley of Flowers Committee for a great event last night. I attended the Queen's Dinner and as always, it was enjoyable. And I wish all the candidates good luck in the upcoming competition. Thank you.
Mr. Caputo?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, also, I would like to thank everybody that came out and voted Tuesday. We've got a few veterans sitting in this audience tonight, you know, that defended that right. So it's, I'm glad to see that we had a good turnout on, on the elections. Also, I would like to say, if you own a firearm, make sure you lock it up. There's a couple of things on the notables where firearms were stolen out of vehicles, unlocked vehicles. You know, make sure you keep them locked up and secured. You know, that's 30% in the city of St. Louis, gun, gun crimes are up 35%. And I'm sure they're all from stolen weapons out of vehicles. So make sure you keep your vehicle, are your vehicles locked up and your firearms secured. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody in Ward 2 and the city of Florissant residents for putting me in for another three years unopposed. I work very hard out here on these streets and the more feedback I get, the more I can get done in the community. I can't be everywhere at one time, but I tell everybody, if you don't see me on your block today, look for me tomorrow. I'd also like to bring up a team, our food pantry, down the street. There's always somebody hungry morning, noon, or night. If anybody's got some change in their pocket, a couple extra canned goods, please run it up the street. They are always looking for volunteers too. So if you guys want to go up there and spend a couple hours, get out of the house, please come up there. Thanks.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank everybody that made the Senior Resource Fair successful last Tuesday. It was very well attended and hopefully a lot was learned. We have a seminar this Wednesday, April 12th at 5:30 for the Community Development Block Grant Program for anyone that's interested in learning how to benefit from that program. Call 839-7680 for more information. Carol O'Meara. And we had many events. Some of them have already taken place leading up to the Valley of Flowers. We had the Arbor Day Celebration last Thursday, April 6th. We planted some more trees up by the jet, up by the voodoo jet. We had some schoolchildren help us out with that event. And that's probably about the 20th year that we've had Arbor Day Celebration. And then we had Electronic Recycling last Saturday, very successful. And we'll have the document shredding on April 22nd at Ferdinand Park from 9 to noon. And well, just, just to warm up a little bit for the Valley of Flowers, we have a food truck night to benefit team and other charities on Friday, April 21st at the Knights Grounds from 5 to 9. And we'll have a Florissant garage sale at the ice rink on April 29th from 9 to noon. And then we have the Wonders of the World as the theme for the 55th Annual Valley of Flowers Parade and Festival from May 5th, 6th, and 7th. We'll have the circus here, the Zoop Family Circus again on May 5th and 6th and the parade on May 7th. For the youngsters, we have pitch, hit, and run contests on Thursday, May 4th at Coke Park from, it's at 6 o'clock. And summer playground registration starts March, well, started March 15th. And the summer playground goes from June 5th through July 14th. And for grandparents and grandchildren, you might want to pay attention. The St. Louis Admirals Model Boat Club moved their headquarters to the Shrine, St. Ferdinand Shrine, and they, they meet every Wednesday at St. Ferdinand Lake. It's kind of fun to watch. Thanks.
Thank you. We will be having a work session scheduled for Monday, April 17th. This will be held in the James J. Egan Center in Room A. At that time, we will, one of the items on the agenda is the court update. The next regular meeting of the Florissant City Council will be on Monday, April 24th. Councilman Schmidt moves to adjourn, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion is carried and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.